Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two quick minutes to be approved and then we will invite in our select chorus. So first, we have the approval of the minutes for the May 6 budget hearing and regular meeting.
Motion second.
Motion second, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Next, we have the approval of the May 22 regular Board of Education special meeting.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Motion second, any further discussion on those? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is passed. Next, we get to welcome our select chorus to here to join us tonight.
Is she nearby or did she take him on a trip? Thank you.
And this is the second and third grade Chatham School Select Chorus. They practice a lot and they give up their recess time to practice as well. Usually they don't complain too much, unless it's sunny. And we are here to sing a couple of thank you and appreciation songs for you. And we understand Mr. Charles will be leaving the board bed, so these are particularly for you, Mr. Charles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, we really wanna thank you, T-H-A-N-K-Y-O-U. Thank you, thank you, we really wanna thank you, thanks. You've been a star, you've been a real super. You've been so great, you've really been super. You've been so fine, we really hope you let us see, H-A-N-K-Y-O-U. Thank you, thank you, we really wanna thank you, T-H-A-N-K-Y-O-U. Thank you, thank you, we really wanna thank you, thanks. Thank you, thank you, we really wanna thank you, T-H-A-N-K-Y-O-U. Thank you, thank you, we really wanna thank you, thanks. Thanks!
Right into "we appreciate you too."
You, you, you! You, you, you! We appreciate you, we think you are great. We appreciate you, yeah, you're really great. You make us so happy with the things you say and do. Oh, we appreciate you! You, you, you! You, you, you! We appreciate you, we think you are neat. We appreciate you, yeah, you can be neat. You make us so happy with the things you say and do. Oh, we appreciate you! You, you, you! You, you, you! We appreciate you, we think you are cool. We appreciate you, yeah, you're really cool. You make us so happy with the things you say and do. Oh, we appreciate you! Yes, we appreciate you! Oh, we appreciate you! You, you, you!
And our last song is for you, Dr. McDonald. Since you're retiring, we certainly appreciate all that you dedicated to the school district and we wish you the best of luck. And so this one's for you.
Thank you. Oh, McDonald.
Oh, McDonald.
I like your eyes, I like your nose, I like your voice, your ears, your hands, your toes. I like your face, it's really you. I like the things you say and do. There's not a single song that sees the skies the way you see them through your eyes. And aren't you glad? You should be glad, there's no one, no one. It's empty like you. I like your eyes, I like your nose, I like your voice, your ears, your hands, your toes. I like your face, it's really you. I like the things you say and do. There's not a single song that sees the skies the way you see them through your eyes. And aren't you glad? You should be glad, there's no one, no one. And we will miss you.
Surprise you didn't bring your Halloween costume from two years ago. Two years ago, Ms. Bolton had a picture of me and kind of padded up her belly a little bit and walked around Halloween parade dressed up like me. So I'm glad she didn't do that again tonight.
Wait, you didn't know the best part? The whole time I'm going, "No, no."
Thank you very much for bringing us here. It's much appreciated and I think we need to do a lot more of this. That was really great, thank you. Appreciate all the hard work you put into that, thank you.
They do work hard, they really do.
Yes.
So, here, pick up your palm trees and go find your box set.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys, thank you, appreciate it.
I missed the show.
With that, we went from the most popular board meeting we've had to the...
Exactly.
To normal, plus again.
Status quo.
Yeah, that was really great. I didn't do that for it, so.
You can almost hear the door shut.
Okay, so I know there's no one here for public comment since how the ring vacated. So we will move on to our discussion items. So first of all, I'd just like to say welcome and congratulations to Ali Regus and Michelle Barker on their election and filling in for the two vacant spots we had. We appreciate you starting early and welcome. We will be welcoming Bruce Dolph, who will join us July 1st, once Kevin retires here.
You're leaving us?
Twelve years?
Nine.
Nine. I don't know, I had you at twelve.
No, I think it was nine.
Nine.
Thank you for all your service.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
It's been interesting.
Hi, you know, honestly, in your, in your short tenure, you've accomplished a lot. I mean, really, if you look at all the facilities worked, that you've started and finished.
We've had a good run.
Done extremely well, so.
Not just me, the whole group has had a good run, so, but thank you.
Okay, regarding advisory committees, just start to think about what committees you want to be on as far as either policy, finance, curriculum, facilities, or any of those committees coming up. Those get reassigned in our reorganization meeting in the first part of July. So just think about what your interests are and which one you might want to be on and...
What night of the week you want to be here?
And let Cory know what you, what you prefer by July 1st, please. Last Wednesday, Teresa Glavin, Tammy, myself interviewed two students for the ex-officiative student board member. And we'll have an official superintendent recommendation made to us on our June 17th meeting for our July 1st start. So just a heads up on that, that recommendation will be coming on June 17th. There is a virtual summer law conference available, August 5th through the 6th, 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Please let Cory, if you're, know if you're interested in attending. Teresa will be attending in person on July 31st, the same training in Albany. A couple of save the dates, July 21 or 22 from 4:30, 7:30 for a special meeting slash work session. If you guys can just respond to that email or get Cory, which one you prefer out of those two dates, we'll get that formalized.
We do have three board members who indicated the 21st and two who indicated the 22nd. So we'll have to try to iron that out.
I think the first, I think the first thing we would do is just say who has an absolute conflict with it, right? So the, try to minimize who can definitely not make it or whether those are preferred selections.
Okay.
I think that would be the easiest, you know, we don't want to miss anybody for you.
So if you could get that to me this week, I can get that back out to you by Friday.
Does anybody have any conflicts on the 21st or 22nd that's...
I have a doctor's appointment in Binghamton at four o'clock that day.
Which day is that?
21st.
21st?
I worked the 22nd.
Okay.
But till six, so, but it's, it's 4:30 to 7:30 was the time for that.
Because it's going to be lengthy, we made it earlier, we could adjust the time, but...
It's far enough ahead, if every, if majority can do the 22nd, then I'll just reschedule that.
Okay, well, let's reach back out to Cory and just see what those conflicts are.
I sent that in the note to Cory, so.
We'll try to...
Take whatever the majority rules.
Best we can.
And that's a, I think, do we set out what the, what the agenda is for that work session? Do they already know that in our communication?
That's the priority.
Priority setting, so that's a very important night for the board, just so everybody knows that. And it's gonna, it's gonna involve a heavy review of this year's results in details, as well as a data review on how things went, results, and various things of nature, to then, you know, then take a look at the priority setting to decide what priority areas as you go forward. As well as a review of the DESEP, the target review for next year, the results of that, that will occur prior to that setting, that session, and in a session earlier in July. So lots coming at you that night.
And if it's easier to adjust timeframe, so just, we'll consider whatever we can make it.
That's, that's good stuff, great stuff to have that detail come to you.
The NISBA annual convention this year is in person, it is in New York City this year, October 23rd to 25th. So just think about if anybody wants to go to that, if, we have to find that finalized by their July 1st board meeting and for Cory to be able to get us through and register. If we choose not to send anybody in that, there are some virtual options coming from NISBA that we can attend certain pieces of, which I know we did some last year. And we also need to appoint our delegate and alternate at our July 1st board meeting. So just as soon as Kevin accepts that, that would be great.
And also just to tag on to that, just to keep in mind, one of the discussions that was had by the board previously was if we don't, with that allocation of money in the budget for board workshops and trainings, is if you don't send a group and use up that allocation, do you then have multiple sessions throughout the year prior to the board meetings to, to gain knowledge in different areas, especially with the, with the change in the board? You're talking, well, Jake, last year, and then three this year, four of seven. So that was a discussion, just to bring that back to the table that you had in the past. So you just have to decide a group what you want to do.
I think I'll get more out of it if I go a second time because now I kind of understand what's going on and it was a little overwhelming going the first time by myself and not...
Right.
I would say the virtual session was pretty good last year, I attended that. It's, it is significantly cheaper, it was like four or $500, but you get access to all the main presentations and the main topics, so.
So maybe we, maybe we consider a combination where we could try to go the cheaper route with some virtual stuff and then if we do have development, more development stuff, they can save budget for that. We can actually have a retreat or two or something like that. But I don't want to discourage anybody, if they want to go down there, that's, you know, I know the in-person, for our new board members, you haven't been to this yet, but they really do an excellent job of putting that on in person and you gain a lot of, a lot of contacts, a lot of knowledge. And when electric buses were first coming out, Kevin Charles was sitting in those presentations to see what we were expecting, what was coming. But I, I agree with Kevin, I do a lot of stuff virtually anymore with, with work and things. So if you're used to that too, that's great because you can zip through presentations, get the highlight stuff. And then if you want to drill down further, you have the opportunity to do that. So whatever everyone's comfortable with, you know, there's, there's seven of us and whatever everybody wants to learn at, at that pace, we'll, we'll try to accommodate the best we can.
And they both have their pros and cons because the virtual gives you the detail at your fingertips, but the one-on-one, you get to meet with people after the fact and have conversations with other districts, what they've experienced.
Some of the other districts.
See, get some of that information, but it's a...
How it works for them and if it's work for us or not.
And the vendors too.
There's, yeah, either way. It's good to get the information out of that convention.
I think Kevin said last year, if it was in Niagara Falls, maybe, but being in the city, not necessarily.
Yeah, I won't deny I have no use to cross the Hudson.
I think the worst part was paying the damn parking was the...
Yep, sorry.
Parking was more than the room was.
I think I'll just go stay at my brother's, make him pick me up at the train station.
So on a final note for discussion, we have proposed to discuss changes to our tax collection, how we do tax collection. So Dr. McDonald will elaborate and we turn it over to Joyce.
So we have, we have Joyce here with us this evening to answer any questions regarding this. For the last few years, as you know, we've made adjustments and had conversations regarding our tax collection process. We moved it from the bank back to the district with some in-person combination of days. And now what, after doing research, what, and there's a document that's there, after doing the research in the area, they have a proposal, I'm just going to go through and then you can elaborate any questions, okay, Joyce?
Sure, first for me.
All right. What we're looking at doing, what's being recommended, is to put a drop box on the outside so that people can drop tax payments off in person, but to no cash. And they still have the ability to come in person, in-person days, and if not, they have a drop box that can be dropped off. Decrease the in-person days from three to two, one in September and one in October. As I said, cash payments no longer accepted, which it certainly does improve security if somebody come in with, with thousands of dollars or hundreds of dollars or whatever it is for taxes. And then you get, that process of, of taking that money and going through it really is a time-consuming process as well. And in the business office, on the non-in-person days, they won't accept anybody coming in on those nights because not prepared to accept people, it disrupts the operation. That's where the drop box will come into play, that somebody can still drop off anytime. They just drop it off in the drop box. And I keep pointing to there because when we first discussed this a year or so ago, I still remember Dick DeMond actually said, "There's the corner, put it right there, secure it in here." This is a secured room, and then anything that's dropped in, you don't have to worry about it, can come in every day and empty it and go forward from there, still remember that. So that's, did I capture that okay?
Yes, but I think as far as putting it in the walls, something about a capital project, that would be doing the vestibule in the...
No, nothing, it won't affect that, we'd be fine.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, but we will, we'll be, maybe, that's not set. Who knows what will happen out there, but that corner there just under won't be affected by any of that.
I just want to highlight that anyone paying with checks, we have in the business office on my desk and on Arlene's desk, we have scanners from Wayne Bank that we take all those tax payments, once we enter them in, all those checks, right in the scanner, just like the bank. We don't have to leave here to make the deposits. And that's key, that's, you know, as far as everything being, you know, checks, money orders and such get scanned. It's so efficient to, to expedite that process in getting that money into the bank quickly.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a change potentially, so we just have to be ready for that. When people, they can't pay your taxes in any format, that they can't make, whether it's a cash deposit or something like that, it's going to be a change and people are going to get excited about that because it is a change. But I, we understand with the efficiencies of, of processing and the safety of not having to take and handle cash, how much better that is for the district, but, you know, it is a change, so be mindful of that when people are, when people are talking.
Do we know how many people pay with cash, just percentage-wise?
Well, in that document, I don't know the amount of people, but I did do the significant cash payments totaled over $100,000.
So it's quite a few.
It's significant amount of cash. And the other thing, they're not just coming on in-person days. So we could, I could be in the middle of payroll, someone else's makes out a meeting, who's doing what? And then there was a specific thing I remember, we had a, a resident at the counter in the business office spread out with $4,000 in cash, and then someone else came in, it wasn't even a collection day, and they were spread out by the mailboxes this way. And then who didn't have enough, "I'm short $10, can I leave my money, go to the bank?" It's extremely disruptive. So it's, and it's difficult, it's time-consuming. And there's very few districts that are accepting cash.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so with us, obviously, if, if, you know, these changes take an effect, will be the communication piece. That will be very important next year. We did the communication piece, we used the digital sign for in-person days, but the digital sign only contains so much information, so there'll have to be a mindful thought on how to communicate this to the public.
Meg and I discussed a letter, a document within the tax bill. When we mailed that out at the end of, and an additional document in there stating the changes. And we also talked about, you know, adding a recorder.
Social media.
Social media as well, yeah.
Well, the, the difficult thing with that though is the people that are... Well, the difficult thing with that though is the people that are paying in cash, I bet, don't deal with social media. This is going to be your elderly, and that's why we had to hold discussion of doing it here in person. And as much as the school wants to be part of the community, and we need it to be part of the community, sometimes we need to deal with some disruptions to be part of the community. Now, I'm not saying that needs, we need to throw our office on its heels at any whim or any time of the day, but I'm just saying, this is a balancing, a balancing act of, not everybody's going to go electronic. We want the taxes paid, we want to support when we go to our budgets. Sometimes you need to support the people a little bit too, when it comes to how to do it. So I mean, this is a, it's not just a, you know, I think it's a two-way street here a little bit. So, but I do, I do personally like the idea of having the drop box. Is there a cost to do the, I'm just not up on this, like if somebody wanted to pay in cash, they got to go get a money order, for example. Is there a cost to that?
I think so.
Is that a flat fee or is that a percentage fee of what, I mean, how does that work?
Depends on the bank.
Depends on the bank, credit union, I think it was a flat fee the last time I had to do something like that.
Is it? I'm just trying to get a feel for, if somebody wanted to pay the four thousand dollars in cash, what's it costing to go put that into a money order form? Any idea?
I don't know what a money order costs today.
I want to say that in the convenience stores, when we were still issuing them there, that was a few years, but I want to say they were like five or six bucks there, and I want to say the credit union was comparable.
The post office does them too, and they're, I think the post office is a flat fee.
So it's not huge money, I guess that's what I was just trying to get at.
You're talking thousands of dollars.
One, one to five dollars according to them.
Okay, so if somebody.
They get a money order.
Right, no, that's what I was looking for, just to get an idea to get rid of the cash.
Just get wide mailer, just a postcard going out as a reminder, maybe.
Right.
Sometime in between the tax bills going out and the first payment date, just to, the drop box there is available, maybe with a picture of it or something like that, with a graphic and just as a postcard.
Go ahead.
Most of the people coming in with cash, they do have checkbooks, their just preferred method was cash.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, we can go forward with it like this with the education outreach piece of it, going out ahead of it, obviously. And then just take feedback at the end, so you know.
Right.
Security liability issues without accepting cash, I mean, that's the way the world's going.
Well, I can see standing there having to count that too and verify. Right, I get that, so.
Gets a bill, a hundred dollar bill gets dropped in the crack somewhere and falls away or.
We can always just, you know, in light of school security measures across the country and everybody, no matter what age level you are, is aware, you know, school security, just with multiple people entering the facility. I'm saying that grandma's going to come in and do something, but you open a door to liability when you have different people that aren't, aren't parents, aren't students, aren't employees entering a secured facility.
That's why we limited the in-person days, that we actually have it in here so that the flow can come right in here because obviously the school is incessant.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
So my hearing, just for clarity, with those points that we're taking, communication, mindfulness, good for them to move forward with planning and adjustment? Okay, thank you Joyce.
Thank you.
If you want to run.
Yeah, I'm going to go home, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, next we have correspondence.
We did have the policy meeting too.
Oh yes, I didn't. I wouldn't buy it. Okay, our policy update, Mr. Verweer.
So we had a meeting on the nineteenth, the meeting notes are accessible through the link there in board docs. We talked about the extreme heat condition legislation that's been finalized. Like we wanted to give a quick update on the measures that we're taking.
It's got to be taken in charge. Yeah, thankfully, when this first began, the governor's stance was very rigid, as sometimes they are at the beginning, where it was going to be setting a temperature in all areas within the school district. And if the area met, reached that level, had to be vacated. Since that time, they worked across the state legislatively, and they've come to the point of mitigation measures. That's what, we're not vacating or moving. Now, moving students or people from it could be a mitigating factor, but it's mitigation that's needed. So it's going to be much easier for us to handle. We are, we do mitigate now, we mitigate with fans, we have air conditioning in most of our buildings, minus the middle school does not have any air conditioning within the instructional areas. B Wing in high school has upstairs and the elementary upstairs, well, the whole building I think has air conditioning. So we're in good shape in a lot of those areas. But when you think about kitchen, cafeteria, that's not air-conditioned. Tech wing, there are some areas that are not, and we have some classrooms that are hot, and we know areas. That's the good thing about the online system, Brett can see it, and we are looking at some of the shades for sun mitigation, which these shades are incredible, what they've done, the ones that we've put down through this out front, as well as, again, we said fan, and they'll have, the administrators, if for some reason the temperature does get out of control, they'll figure out movement of students if needed, so.
And those components being added to the safety plan, correct?
Correct, the only thing that has to be added to the safety plan is a blurb. I believe, Mr. Robinson, when we talked to, we're putting a blurb in the safety plan that indicates that we will be doing mitigation measures.
Correct, pointing to that new policy.
Right, and then we'll be detailing out, as Brett develops them, we'll detail out a plan. I don't know where that will land, whether that's appendix of safety plan or whether it ends up as a procedural document to this, but that is in development.
The investment policy, that's an item that we're going to develop the August meeting. We talked about the public use of school facilities policy, which has come back, I think was last developed in 2019. We're going to move forward with the first reading on that next meeting, is that the plan, next meeting? We have an artificial intelligence policy that came from NISBA, we're going to move forward with that at the next meeting, is that the plan or?
Yes.
Students in personal electronic devices, there's some new information out on this, right? NISBA put out a policy now, and so we're going to be coming forward with the first reading next meeting, is that correct?
And as you can see on the notes that are in blue, August first is the deadline for it to be finalized, final approval from the board, as well as posted on the district website. So given that fact, and the fact that you are having a meeting in July, it worked out perfectly for us with timing. So on that, on that meeting, special meeting workshop, you will have one agenda item, at least one agenda item, which will be that, that policy, and that will hit our public comment period in that timeline. The administrators, we actually had a lengthy meeting today on this. They're working through the details on the how for the first reading. You'll hear about that at the next meeting, as far as how they're going to handle it. They're looking, I'll tell you now, they're looking at lockers in the middle high, and they'll explain that when they, when they're working through the how and looking at backpacks and possibly cubbies in elementary, which is pretty much what they do now. And then some areas in the offices for when there's non-compliance issues. So they have a safe place to put them in the office when they have to confiscate them for the day. So they're working through those details, code of conduct, details as far as progression of discipline. That has been worked out, that will also be presented to you as we have our typical, our annual code of conduct, public.
The public hearing?
Public hearing, next meeting, and then that's open for public content until, comma as well until September. So all those details will be coming, unfortunately. As we sat here and waited and waited and waited, and we talked about this how many times, the original plan was to get after this in February. We held, and thankfully we did, because it changed, almost the whole thing changed. But as the state of New York likes to do, they like to give us very short timelines and expectations that make it very difficult. So, but we're okay, the team's been working on this behind the scenes as far as if this, if this is what the final is, then this, and if this, then this type of scenario, then we just put the pieces together. So you'll get all those details at the next meeting with those two presentations. The first reading of the policy and the code of conduct we can.
Ex officio student member of the board, we have a minor revision to, in addition, if we do not get any applicants for the position. So that's in addition, that'll come to a first reading next meeting. And then the policy review plan, Cory has developed a plan, she has an amazing spreadsheet that she's tracking all the policies. And basically, it's a review cycle that we're going to go through. So those policies that show up on our meetings, make sure that we're reviewing those and.
Right, and I will add the most recent adoption or revision date for them.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, anything else under discussion? Okay, we're up to correspondence. We have received one correspondence from NISBA, level one board achievement award. Someone's been awarded a honor for Mr. Verweer. Congratulations. I think that was for attending the meeting.
Yeah, for attending, yeah.
Special award for.
Probably more than that.
That's a, that's a good verbal praise, that's good. But just so everybody is aware, there are different levels of board achievement awards for NISBA. The more credits you take through their online achievements, things like that, you can build credits to, I believe, the level four. Okay, next two items, let's see, additions to the agenda?
We don't have any additions, however, today, Mrs. Hungerford informed me that on item F, a consent agenda item seven F, approving the per diem part-time typist, her rate of pay should be sixteen sixty-five instead of fifteen fifty. So I've made that correction. And also, at this time, we do not have an electricity or gas bid award, so those will be pushed to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. We are up to the consent agenda, does anyone want to have any of those items polled for discussion and/or have discussion on any of the items for consent agenda?
I do not have them. I just want to be in there.
So typically for our consent agenda items, any one of, any one of us can poll any of those and discuss any one of those because consent is done as like a one motion to adopt them all. Usually I go through and try to just highlight some of the things on there. If you have financial reports, we'll bring them to your attention to look at. If you have any questions on the financial reports, we can discuss all those openly. We have approval of bus routes, this time declaring surplus from the school, transferring of funds. We have approval of the part-time per diem typist, accepting of the MOA retirement employee contract, appointment of the assistant clerk, appointment of Delaware Valley Hospital sports medicine program agreement. I think that, I just want to highlight, I think that's an excellent program. If you have a chance to read through all of that, the services that the district is going to receive for almost the exact same cost are phenomenal through this program. So my hats off to whoever did the legwork and research on that, we appreciate it because.
I'll take that credit, usually I get to hand it off, but that one, facet increase in the cost last year, if you recall, from five hundred to five thousand, opened the door, I discussed with you and said that, you know, now that they're going to do that, I'd like to explore other options with UHS. And thankfully, UHS was, there was no hesitation. They were all hands on deck, they loved the idea, we went back and forth with renditions, getting exactly what we needed. And the result is, is the document that's here, it's terrific. So it's great to be building an increase in the partnership with Delaware Valley as they expand their operations for the region.
It's very important for your student athletes, who and your students in general, to have someone on. If you have a specific sports injury, they're already qualified, it's a tremendous look. I know, I'll just throw it out there, my son tends to sprain his ankle from time to time, as do a lot of the basketball players, and having that hands-on assistance immediately to assess and to go through programs like that, it's just, it's amazing to have, it's a great resource. This is again, how we're trying to focus the school to be our community hub, right? Have those available to all the students out there, so I appreciate the hard work on that, and thank you for taking credit.
Okay, they got to take credit once in a while.
We have disposition of records generally, personnel resignations and retirements. So Kay Bixby resignation and Leo Otto resignation, unpaid leave of absences, you'll see in there as a general approval. Personnel appointments and athletic appointments are all contained in that. So if anybody wants to discuss any of that, we can pull any of those. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion on that? All those in the favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. New business, one of our favorite things is accepting donations with great appreciation to the school. A hundred dollars from Victoria Gregory to the Walton FFA chapter, two hundred dollars from David Jackson to the Walton FFA chapter for the annual banquet, a thousand dollars from the Regus family to Larry Sess Scholarship in memory of Larry and Sally Regus, and four CPR practice dummies from Jeff Held to the Walton Central School District. I would entertain a motion to accept those donations.
Make the motion, second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Those are accepted with sincere appreciation. You may want to elaborate on our next one, our next one is our creation of the automotive mechanic helper position.
So if you may recall or know that we've always had a custodial worker slash bus driver position. We've been unable to fill it, it's been very difficult to fill over time. And in reviewing civil service job descriptions, the automotive mechanic fits everything that we have that custodial helper. Because custodial worker slash bus driver do. So it puts it more in line with the transportation department, rather than a custodial worker slash bus driver, which, you know, where am I working, am I working as custodian, am I working as a bus driver, what exactly am I doing? Mechanic helper gives you impression accurately that it's in the garage, and the job description is very clear on what the role is. So we're trying to elicit more applicants and people that are interested in that type of position. And nothing else is different, the salary's the same, benefits are the same, it's changing with title. It is the blended rate like we'd already worked on, we'd already changed that from a separation rate to a blended rate. So when they drive as a driver, they get compensated appropriately, when they work as a custodian, they get compensated appropriately. It's the same exact deal that we already changed and adjusted.
So when you shift them to bus garage, then that also shifts the way that they get funded for payment with reimbursement through state, right?
That already occurred behind the scenes, but you are correct.
So that would bump it to the ninety percent instead of.
Yep. And then the custodian worker slash bus driver was already.
Fit into that?
Yeah.
But this solidifies it.
Yep.
That's where they live.
So we'll see what happens. I kind of jumped the gun a little bit, it's already been advertised, try not to do that, get out in front of the board, but this one, I kind of lost my way. And, but we've been desperate, but we haven't hired anybody, so. We have had a couple people express interest, but nobody, nobody comes through, we'll see what happens.
Is it posted on our site, like on the Walton site?
Yeah, we post on Indeed, and if you go on our, what we do, is when you go on our website and you go to job openings and you click non-teaching openings, it takes you to the Indeed page for all Walton openings. You click on teacher openings, it takes you to the OLS, which is the online portal for it. That way, rather than trying to keep up the list and not have errors and have things all, it's linked to live action on those sites. And we have advertised, I don't know if we've advertised this one yet, that has been our digital sign, it's been out social media-wise, and I don't know if we get the reporter yet, or I think we have, but that'll all be repeated if we don't get applicants soon.
Any further discussion on that? I'd entertain a motion to create that title change?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is created. Okay, next we have the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of the serial general obligation bonds. This will have to be a roll call vote, and we will have to have the majority on this to adopt it. Any discussion on that lengthy resolution? I'd entertain a motion?
Second.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Mr. Dutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Verweer?
Yes.
Mrs. Belker?
Yes.
And Mrs. Regus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. That is carried. Next, we have the RFP for bond council. We try to renew our, not only our attorneys that are on call for us, that work on behalf of the district, but our architects and consulting firms, all those things on a regular five-year basis, this is no different. So this RFP specifies that it's a three-year term with the option to renew for two years, I believe, one year at a time. So any further discussion on resolution for bond council?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That is carried. Next, we have up is the adoption for the data privacy resolution.
This may seem familiar to some of the board members from earlier this year, we did the same thing. This is an updated version of that process. The RIC maintains our software, Ed2D, privacy details, they run databases and they maintain all that for us on our behalf, so this gives them the authorizations to continue to do that.
Any further discussion on that? Go ahead.
I was going to move it.
All right. I would like it.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That is adopted. Next, we have the transferring of funds, smart bonds project expenses. This will authorize the transfer, the amount not to exceed forty-one sixty-four thirty-two to the capital projects fund to cover a portion of the costs incurred under the smart bonds project.
I'll move it. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That's carried. And finally, we have the personnel appointments for a part-time food service helper as well as science teacher. So Karen Olson-Hamlin for a part-time food service helper and Nate Cudding for our science teacher position.
I'll make a motion. Second. Yeah, I've heard that name before, too.
Motion second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Welcome Karen and Nate. And we are up to supervisor remarks.
Yeah, I've been waiting a long time to say this. Mr. Robinson, you have any comments since you're here tonight?
It's nice to be back. I appreciate the support from all of you. It's been needed and appreciated. It has been a difficult transition getting back here, but it's been nice. Today is my first ten-plus hour day, which I'm proud of, because before they were normal, and I'm still here, so it feels really good. Work-wise, the big project for the summer is really just upgrading everything from Windows ten to eleven. We have over four hundred workstations. Each workstation takes, and yours from an hour to three hours to upgrade, depending on if it's an older machine or newer machine, will tell you how well that migration takes off, and if, we have to work through it manually. So it's a lot of work. We don't have Cindy during the summer over at Townsend, but we have our two technicians that have been doing an extremely good job and have grown significantly over the last five or six months, thanks to situation we've been put in. So that is our main project. We just finished our server upgrade for the cameras, so we're good until another seven to nine years, seven or eight usually. And we're going to start replacing the cameras soon as well. Besides that, things are running smoothly. It's the end of the year, so this is where we actually do most of our work, from here until September, where a lot of people, their positions slow down, ours actually speed up and put the, put our feet down and get running if we can.
Great to have you back.
I appreciate you guys more than you know. So I want to say that as emotional less as I can, because I'm a, you know, where am I part of my sleep, so, thank you.
The two other reports, we have transportation and O N M. Transportation-wise, the normal end of the year operations, one item that's not, that I should comment on is the brake certification class that we're going to be hosting at the bus garage, the Head Mechanics Association. One of the items that we've been working very hard with, especially with the issues and the trials that we've had with our inspections, in, since Mr. Nolan has come on, is the creation of regional opportunities and training opportunities, not only for our director, but also for our mechanics, and giving them collaboration opportunities. But the sharing among the districts with trainings and various items is increasing, which is great to see, and this is an example of that. So that's a great opportunity for our folks to have, to host that brake certification class. In addition to that work, which I'm assuming this will probably be, well, maybe this July note, but as a note to the district or to the board, as you know, we run summer drivers on. This year, we're fortunate enough that we have the same teacher still continuing, who was not a staff member of Walton, but she comes in, she's done it the last couple of years. But we now, we also have a staff member from Walton, who formerly used to be driver ed, still a certification, who was interested in doing driver ed again. So we are going to run two classes this summer. So we're going to be able to meet the needs of twice as many students for driver ed, because we always end up not being able to fit enough in, not be able to do enough. And if you remember back in the day, you might remember, we used to have two.
We had two.
With George Appleton and you speak Laird Ake, and then George Chaff and Sal Sylvia. So it's nice to be able to run two again, you know, to get kids, well, maybe to at least get caught up, as long as we can do the two. So Mr. Nolan's got to come up with a second card, so he's going to be out working on that, and, but we'll get that, we'll get that taken care of. So that's an exciting add, and it just happened, it worked out perfectly for us. So next month, you'll have, those folks are hired through BOCs, but the contractual rate that BOCs pays is not the contractual rate of our contractual rate, so we pay the difference. So next month, there'll be appointments coming to you for approval, recommendations for approval for the amount that's different between the hourly, if that makes sense. I've been trying to get BOCs to just say, pay the contractual rate of the districts in their co-ser, then everybody can do what they need to do in their contracts, but no. And you can't blame folks, do I need to get paid what their contractual rates are? So that will be coming next. So there's a little preview to what I'll be talking about next month. O N M contractor is there. He's there, he's over in the gym finishing the sound panels for you two folks. We, last year, we had the hundred thousand dollar outlay, which was to replace the sound panels in the auditorium at Townsend, which were desperately needed. And they did the two long walls. This year, they're doing, they're finishing up on the two end. So they're over there now, it should be done by the end of the week, and everything seems to be going okay. We moved the class out, sealed the hallway corridors, so if there is any dust at all, it won't go down, turn it off the ventilation, so it's not moving anything out. Learning from past woes with dust when we have school in session, so we should be fine with no concerns with that. So that will be done. The other thing that we don't have listed here, the other, I'll leave these items, I won't highlight all of them, but the one thing that's not listed here, I don't think we've talked about, two years ago during COVID, if you remember part of our COVID money, we purchased two outside shades for outside cafeteria, for outside dining, through cafeteria funds. They haven't been, they haven't been put up yet. We finally got them, and through cafeteria funds, we were going to install them ourselves, but we were able to pay for the company to come and install, which, these, you know, you're going to have to put pillars in the ground and cement and everything, better off having a company come in. So that's going to be done this month, hopefully in time for the seniors to actually get out and enjoy it for, the shade for a couple of days, if we actually can hold off the rain and sun out.
Well, stop the rain.
You might need more than umbrellas than a shade.
Yep. And we also have a company coming in to do a replacement of one of the UPK, I think it's UPK area, pieces of equipment. So those things, they have arrived, and we're just waiting to get a date, so that'll be done. So there's a couple highlights there to add to it. On my end, just a reminder, this is the end of the year, all types of activities going on, end of the year, staff barbecue. We did get donations between NISCUS and the, you've already approved, NISCUS and Arcatis and CNS, that we are doing a chicken barbecue again for the staff. So Kevin, I know you came up and helped us last year, I think. So that is on the twenty-sixth, Corey, right? Thursday the twenty-sixth, say at noon. So if anybody's interested in coming up and helping serve or just see folks, that would be a great time to do it. We're going to do it here in the high school again. It seems to be a very appreciated event for everybody, and we have tweety's coming in and doing the sides, and we have our typical, barbecue chicken. There we go. So.
What time is that?
It's going to be good.
Noon?
Noon. Yep. Yep. And that's on the twenty-sixth, beginning of the twenty-seventh, if you recall, is the last day, but we hold that, we're going to see closing day. Hopefully, we won't need it for any crazy event that may happen between now and then, and then that is, we're going to see Snowy get back on that day, which is a raining day for high school, seven through twelve anyway, but we'll be a district closing on that day. So that's why I'll be doing it on the twenty-sixth. That's all.
Okay, we do have a need for executive session. We will need a resolution to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a matter related to a particular employee.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will enter executive session. I would also ask that, will anyone pre-populate a motion to adjourn, since how no action is going to be taken after executive session, we'll return to general session and then adjourn.
So move it.
Let you go.
Yeah, I got it. Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.